Okay, Mayor, we're ready for you. Oh, they took our flag away again. Sorry.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Department reports. Let's go with the chief.
Evening. Apparently, we've got a little hiccup and you don't have any reports of what's going on lately. But we'll get that fixed, right, Devin? Okay. Actually, everything's been a little bit busy, a little bit hectic, as we know. From my last council meeting, we do have our bank robber in jail. He's still sitting there, as far as I know. And again, I can't thank the citizens who got involved in that safely enough, or we may still be looking for the guy. Halloween went over without a problem. Still got a lot of candy left, hint. Other than that, everything's pretty much normal. What a great way to start my first month.
Good afternoon, everybody. So, the blades came in for the mixers, so that's good. So now, we're gonna have a backup on that. So, that was pretty good. I was kind of wondering if it wasn't on one of those ships out in the ocean, but they finally swam ashore and it showed up. So, that's good. Getting ready to close the park. It'll be closed tomorrow morning. The bathrooms will be closed. We're gonna do some work inside the bathrooms also. So, I don't know how long that's gonna take. I don't know how long they'll be shut down, but the rest of the park will be shut down. We'll winterize everything and get that stuff going. So, the meter project's still going along. Michelle gave me some information tonight. We're right about a little less than $61,000 into it. For the most part, that's just purchasing the meters, a little bit of labor and all that stuff and some plumbing. But that's going along real well, too. Hopefully, we can get it before the end of the year, all installed. If not, we may have to run into next year a little bit on that. Other than that, pretty much, everything's going well.
Mike, how many do you have in total now?
Uh, we got almost half.
Half? And they're working fine?
Yeah, so far, yeah.
Okay.
Working good.
Any questions for Mike?
I, uh, just wondering if, from your perspective, whether or not the the one-way street in front of the school is working out? And I guess I was gonna ask Sam the same thing, whether or not we're having any kind of issues with that.
Uh, I don't know if there's day-to-day issues. I think when there's functions going on, like Halloween, he said it was a little bit of a bad house down there, a lot of traffic and all that stuff. Probably a couple of cars got switched around and go the wrong way. The signs have been up now for quite a while. I assume that everybody that brought their kids would know, you know, to go correctly. We had the school grade re-rock the entrance around by the park. That seems to be okay. They haven't complained anymore from that because of the potholes. I guess we'll have to see. I know they changed it back, so that just kind of put a wrench in everything that we've tried to do, you know, to make it a one-way. But I haven't heard of any real complaints. I know there was a couple of times when the traffic was backed out to Fifth, but I don't know if they've got that all squared away now, so it flows.
Yeah. And it's my understanding that the biggest issue there was people learning the new process that they put in place there at the school.
Yeah, I think they changed it around together.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I think they're still trying to find what works the best, but that's understandable. Certainly, the one-way street is a far safer option because kids only have to be concerned about one car rather than both ways.
Right, and, and, you know, like we were talking before, it used to be a two-lane road. So, the buses been pulled over against the curb. That's quite a bit of room for the cars to still pass. Children, of course, are kind of concerned there. They need to be watched. So, they could probably sneak down Sixth Hill instead of just going all the way down Fifth and then pulling in. So, yeah, well, we'll see.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Any other questions for Mike? Sam, is he correct on that? Talk a little bit, you saw a couple you told me about last night. Thanks, Mike.
Randy's had a chance to go down there in the morning from time to time early on. I've been out later in the evening or later in the day. But during Halloween, they had all those tents set up. There were so many cars that were in and out parked one way or the other. Everybody was walking because we didn't have any buses. I didn't try to make a bunch of people move. But for some reason, people still aren't seeing signs that say "one-way." So, I was talking to Mayor a little bit about it, and maybe we can get some other signs up that just really says it, maybe painted on the street. But of course, that'd be up to Mike to figure out.
Another option that might make sense would be to block off that one street. It's a Washington that meets the middle school.
Right.
Block it off when we have special events. Just have a closure sign and then, then on the other end, put "do not enter one-way." And then you would, then you would probably resolve this.
Right, that would help out.
Yeah, it, it certainly, the way they set it up did not facilitate a smooth operation.
As I understand, this first year, we had it one-way during Halloween.
Yeah, and, and, and the setup was such different than what normally because very often, the setup was either inside or it was around back.
Right.
And, yeah, yeah, and they could have just easily, if they planned it, put it on the outside, and hopefully, they'll, they'll have their lessons learned also. But the one thing we could do, perhaps, to facilitate them not coming up the wrong way is to block off that one street just for the time of the event. And then, on the other street, have a clear sign that says "one-way, do not enter."
Yeah, that'd make a lot of sense. I could outwalk around during that period of time. Fortunately, everybody was driving slow and walking and parking, so.
They're very careful.
So, yeah.
Any other questions for Sam? Thank you, Sam.
Certainly.
Michelle?
So, in your packets, information to sign up for the essential training for new councils. So, I think Shelley would be a good one for you to sign up for. And Gary, I think Ron has already taken it. Eric's already got signed up for it as being unopposed. So, as long as there's not some big write-in campaign, we're good. So, other than that, I've been working, our offices have actually been working quite a bit for the City of Winlock this last week and a half or so. They all contracted COVID over there, and it was really bad timing because it's budget season and payroll. And so, we actually had a lot of hours over in Winlock this past week and a half. So, they're back in session now, though, and so, still helping them trying to get through the budget process because they're pretty far behind. So, that's all I really have. I will be out next week on vacation. So, of course, Thursday is Veterans Day, so it is a holiday.
Any update on the food bank?
No update on the food bank.
Okay.
No.
Any questions for Michelle? Thank you, Michelle. concludes all the... Sorry. That concludes all the reports, Department reports. Now, we're gonna move down to the public hearing. 2022 Budget, Revenues and Property Tax Special Presentation. Do we have anybody to speak on that?
Me.
Okay. Me, come on up.
So, it's part of the budget process, so we have to have a public hearing on it. So, the notifications have been out on a possibility of increase to property taxes. As you guys could see in your packet, we get around, you know, $74,000 a year in property taxes. All we can ask for is 1% above that, which is about $740. So, spread over a population of 720, it's just a little over a dollar per population, per person. So, other than that, your revenue information's in your packets on where we are expected our revenues to hit for next year. We will be getting the, the ARPA funds again, which are the COVID money. And so, I think we'll be having to meet with our little committee to see, give some recommendations on where we should be spending those funds. We still have funds that we received this year, so getting through that. There's, I mean, it's a weird year because of being this last year. We weren't able to collect any late fees, shut-off fees, and things like that. So, kind of looking into this crystal ball of what's gonna happen this next year. And with that, we have been really good about sending letters out with everybody's bills that if they, you know, need to pay their bill in, you know, monthly payments, they can do that. So, and we've had five people sign up, I think, so far. And there's still a few out that we haven't heard from. So, we'll see what's gonna happen. There might be some angry people shut off of Water Sewer. We've given them plenty of notice, plenty of time. And, you know, the one thing that I've been very frustrated about that is we couldn't do anything due to COVID, but they didn't have to prove that they were affected by COVID either. Either, you know, losing their jobs, lower hours in the hospital, you know, having to take care of their children, anything else. So, there, you know, it was a one-way street. And so, it was kind of frustrating on, you know, a lot of utilities parts. So, we'll just work through that and hear it. I know, as of yet, nobody in the public has requested any documentation on revenue sources or anything like that. We have them at City Hall if they wish to choose to pick them up. That's all I have, unless you guys have any questions.
The one, the one thing that was going through my mind is that if the person is behind, we do have monies that we could use to help them become clean. If, and at that point in time, then we can make them prove that their situation isn't just that they're not gonna force me to pay, so I'm not, but rather that they have a real, true COVID-related type situation.
Yeah, along with that, too, there's a lot of programs out there that are helping people out. We have given all the resource information to everybody, too, that this is where you go to for this type of help, so.
And in the, the notes that we send, because I think what we're gonna be have reached the final option, and that is to shut them off. And then, they'll probably, at that point in time, be more responsive. And you certainly would hope. But maybe when we, when we're ready at that point, we could have something that, that, that we would attach to that, to that notification that we're gonna shut you off. If you really have a COVID-related thing, then there are helps, contact.
Yeah, I think all of you guys have seen what we've sent out in the, you know, Water Sewer Bill. So, we've been pretty good about making sure that, you know, there's plenty of information, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, is there any public comment on the agenda items? Nothing? We'll move on to new business. Interlocal agreement, Lewis County IT Services. It's the yellow sheet on your packet. Do I have to read the first paragraph? No? Ask for a vote? Or entertain a motion on this interlocal agreement?
I so moved.
So moved, do I hear a second? Shelley seconded, okay. Is there any other question or discussion on it? Nothing? Okay, let's vote on it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number two, ordinance number 768, ad valorem tax, first reading. An ordinance amending ordinance number 760 of the City of Toledo. Whoa, oh, 760, why does it say that? Oh. Okay, I'll read it again. Ordinance number 768. An ordinance amending ordinance number 760 of the City of Toledo establishing the valor, lorarium, tax levy upon real and personal property within the City of Toledo for the year 2022.
Michelle, should that be, the two numbers should agree? 768 and 760, or are they?
Yeah. So, what happens is every year, we have to pass an ad valorem tax. So, this is repealing the previous year's ad valorem and a new ad valorem tax for this coming year.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for this one.
I would move, I would accept ordinance number 768.
Can I hear a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Let's vote on it then. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, there's no more new business. Unfinished business, ordinance number 767. An ordinance of the City of Toledo vacating a 60-by-80 plus-minus section of the west end of the unimproved street, St. Helen's Street slash Sal Al Street intersection adjacent to lots seven through nine, block 11. Kellogg's, second addition to the City of Toledo parcel number 006994-000-000. I'll entertain a motion for this one.
Move, we approve ordinance number 767.
Can I hear a second? Second, any more discussion? Okay, let's vote on it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. No more unfinished business. Other businesses, COVID-19 updates, anything, Michelle?
Here locally in Toledo, we've, you know, know of several people that have had COVID, currently have COVID or lost to COVID. This past week, I think a lot of you are aware, a past council member, Jim Williams, passed away over the weekend from COVID. And we had another younger gentleman that passed away from COVID that was very active in the community with our youth. So, a lot going on there.
Yes, there is. Thanks, Michelle. Okay, public input? Anything from the public? Ron?
Grab the mic. Thank you.
My name's Ron Smith, and I'm with the Lions Club. Two months ago, it was after the Bluegrass Festival, we had a dinner meeting down at the park. And I noticed that the tables that were usually in the building, they were scattered around from the Bluegrass Festival. Well, the guys all got together and we brought all the tables back into the building. This month, I noticed we went back down there. You guys had had probably rented the building out to somebody that had something, and they changed the tables, put some of them outside, and never put anything back. Well, today, Jim Flukinger and I went down there, brought in the wet tables, blew all the stuff out of the kitchen, cleaned it up. Somebody had put some plastic up over a couple of windows. We tore that down. Garbage bags, I think they were. And cleaned the kitchen up and brought in as many tables as we could. There's room for another, I mean, if you stood all the tables up, you could get them all in there. But we got the wet ones that were always in there. We got them back inside, blew them off, cleaned up around there. And was gonna take, we're gonna have a deal at the wall for Veterans Day. I mean, there won't be anything, I don't think, anything scheduled, but we're gonna clean the wall up. And I asked Mike if he had mowed the lawn around that area that week. I think I asked him for Tuesday, and if he could do it on Monday, it'd be better because then Tuesday, we'll be in there weed-eating and cleaning the wall up. But I was just gonna make a suggestion. If, if you rent something out, this is, this is what I think, then you ought to tell the people to put the things back the way they, they found them. There's a lot more tables to pick up down there. Stuff that, those tables sit out in the weather. There's a shortage of tables down there anyway. My old friend Gary Stamper, I was always on him about getting us more tables, and now, he's not gonna, he's gonna get out of that. But anyway, gotta take care of what we got. So, that's how I feel, and that's what we did, and we're gonna, we're gonna clean that up for the wall, or clean the wall up next week.
Also, I did hear Ron on Facebook, I did see the advertisement for coffee and cookies served by Vicky Davis at the wall coming up. So, I did see that advertisement on Facebook already.
Okay.
It's out there right now, and we'll have the gate, of course, open. I don't know if they're gonna set up any tents for chairs. I don't know that.
If, if that's what she wants, that, that's what we'll do, but she's never said anything, so.
That's just what I saw.
And I, I don't know if she was gonna do that in the kitchen. I got that table, that kitchen full of tables now, but.
I, I, only thing I understood is she was gonna have it, just like she did last year, outside, a little table with some coffee and cookies.
Okay, I can get with her and set her tent.
Okay, all right. I do have one more thing for public input. I did talk to Rick today, and he was getting ready to go into the hospital because of illnesses affecting his body. And he asked me to ask the council if we could be lenient on him moving out for a few days. He doesn't know how long he's gonna be in the hospital, doesn't know how much is gonna affect him and how long it's gonna affect him. But since we're locking the park up, and as Mike said, we're locking the restrooms up, we shouldn't have a need for anybody to be in the park except for the holiday coming up, the Veterans Day coming up. That's the only people that'll be there. And I don't know, Mike, do you think they'd be able to open the restrooms on that day?
Yeah, I guess there's this maintenance stuff that needs to be done in there. So, I mean, if it's for the day or for any event, I'm certain we can open it up.
Okay. And Rick did say he's working diligently and trying to get everything moved, and he's selling his equipment and stuff like that. Jim, you wanna say something?
Yeah.
Ron, Ron's Zoom.
Yeah, I talked to Rick today, and he has a travel trailer in Yakima. He's working on bringing over. He may have a place to stay, but he would really like to be able to stay in the park at least February, if that's at all possible. Just because of the winter months, otherwise, he's gonna be hopeless. And that's up to you guys, I guess, make him homeless or not.
Do you guys wanna discuss it a little bit further? It's, I've told you everything I know, and Jim told you what he knows.
Can I might ask Mike a question following up on Ron?
Go ahead.
When we...
Mike, can you come and grab a microphone?
When we rent a facility to somebody and they actually move the stuff out to set up, do we have a policy about them returning?
Not that I know of.
There actually are two issues, if I understand it. One is that people are moving stuff around when they rent it. So, we need to adopt our policy rental agreements so that they, they don't do that. But there's other ones that are out because of the normal wear and tear. So, what we really need to do is add to our fall closing of the park schedule the criteria to make sure everything is picked up because these two gentlemen did us a great service, but we should have it as part of the regular process, just like we put up the Fourth of July or the Thunder, I get the Cheese Days signs upright that we, we, we schedule that ahead of time. We schedule the lights, and we should schedule putting away the, the stuff in the park. And I don't know whether or not we need to obtain extra help during that time or whatever, but it should be something that's a regular part of the maintenance to put them up. And then, obviously, somebody takes them out at the beginning of the year, so, yeah.
Right, and the, the issue I see, too, is there's not a lot of room in the kitchen. And when somebody goes in there to use the kitchen and all the tables and stuff are there, they're, they're gonna crap them all down. And, and Ron and Jim have been, I mean, for years, have been doing all this stuff. It's a testament to them guys and the community. But there is a problem there with, like, room and all that stuff. And we could probably write something up or, or start something that, you know, this time, everything's gonna go in there, and then we'll have to decide if we wanna use the area where the fireplace is anymore or, or if we can have another facility, maybe to put the tables so they're not, you know, or half of them or something like that. So, there is still room that might help out a little bit on that.
Yeah, and if we created a metal canopy that we could stack them under, that would, that would protect them better.
Keep them dry. The ones that stay out a lot of times are the rubber-coated ones, but there are a lot of wooden ones. And, yeah, they stay out in the rain too long.
Yeah.
We know what happens, so.
But you bet. You bet.
So, do you guys wanna discuss the host?
I guess my concern is we're talking about bringing another trailer over for him to stay in. Is that what he's talking, Jim, about moving another trailer?
I think it's to a different spot, Ron. If he gets his trailer, he's gonna, doesn't he have some land around here, or somebody's gonna VA's, VA's gonna help him find a spot here to put a trailer?
Yes, possibly, yeah. He has some open vital land. And he's for his sister, Matt, also working on him getting a travel trailer over here to put on another piece of...
On a different piece of land, okay. I, I understand what you're saying.
Right now.
And I just wanna let council know, when things are brought up the day of your meeting and you don't know anything about it, you don't have to make a decision tonight. You could wait till we have more information, too, and make a decision at the next council meeting. I know the mayor's concern is that we had a drop-dead date of the Fourth of November, which is, you know, this week. So, I mean, if you wanna act on extending it till the next council meeting or something like that, you know, I would just caution you to be careful until you know all your information. And this is, this happened, I mean, for any subject, not just this subject, any subject. Don't be pushed into making a decision when you don't have the information in front of you.
That's right, and I appreciate that. My, my concern of, of anything, of everything in regards to the, this current situation is that there was a diligent effort, though it was painted that it wasn't, but there was a diligent effort to give a few months' advance warning that this was a consideration that the city was gonna have. And my only concern of extending it too far is that, is that we will be getting to the place where we might have somebody that would assume that position, that would wanna move in. And we don't want to, we don't wanna close that. So my, my real concern, Mayor, would be that we would perhaps get a hold of Rick and get some definite information as far as the dates as to when he's gonna find out whether this trailer is here. July, January is not a good time, or February is not a good time to bring something from Yeah. And that's, that's the whole thing. It's very, very possible.
My question is, what would hurt that two people? I mean, what do you get for that Peter seven, Redford seven twenty-four down there? He said ten days law to nineteen years. Ten days. His brother passed away. He wasn't able to go to that funeral. The son passed away at basketball. He wasn't able to go to that funeral. It was a part. And I don't see any harm in anybody being there to February. I just don't see it. Nineteen years and thirty day notice.
Yeah. And, and I would agree that nineteen years and thirty day notice would be a very, very short time and very uncaring. But it wasn't thirty days ago that he was first had a beginning of the understanding that, that, that this was a decision that was gonna be made. And, and, and weeks, months went by and before an official decision was made. And that's, would it be, be a problem if more than one person is in there? No. But we should have a definite, we should have a definite date, not sometime in February. We should have a definite understanding. We, we really don't wanna get to February and be told, well, you know, that deal didn't fall through or, or something along those lines. And we, we tried to, we tried very hard to, to, to be as fair and as honest as we can. The fact of the matter is, is that we could hold him to the drop dead date. I, I appreciate the suggestion that Michelle had that we would extend it till the next council meeting. But at that point in time, then we should have a definite time. I mean, a, a trailer is either available or it isn't. Somebody to bring a trailer over here is either available or it isn't. And so what we really need is a, is a, a, some more definite details of what, what we're asking, what we're being asked to, to respond to. And
Do you have someone who lives at the park now?
No, no, no.
So what are your odds if each property got it two weeks, that it'll be destroyed through the month of February?
Yeah.
The bathrooms, I mean, you have no idea. Maybe you might have an idea what's
And, and who is there tonight? Who's there tonight? Who is there tonight?
Is Rick there? Is Rick in the hospital or is he there at the park?
Why, oh, Rick?
Rick?
Going to the hospital.
Is he in the hospital?
No.
Or is he in the park?
He's in the park right now.
Okay. When I talked, when I talked to
In the hospital, we spoke to the doctor. He checked out.
When I talked to him tonight, this afternoon, late this afternoon, he was possibly going to the doctor.
No. He, he, he called the doctor, the doctor made an appointment later this evening. Maybe they don't even live for another three plus two hours.
Nobody knows that, Jim?
Nobody knows it.
Okay. We've moved it to the next, next meeting, two weeks. I'll talk to Rick.
I
You need counsel.
I think you need the council to approve it.
Council to approve it? Okay. Is that a formal motion?
I certainly would move that we would extend the date until the next council meeting and expect at that point in time to, to have very distinct details. And with the understanding that, that if we're not provided that, then that would itself become the drop dead date.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Move in second. Any more discussion?
I just wanted to warn council that if you allow somebody in there free of charge, that is a gift of public funds. So if they're not doing a service for us, it is a gift of public funds. And so I just wanna caution you on that. The auditor does look at that very closely.
I will amend my motion, if I can, to extend the life of the contract until the next council meeting.
My biggest problem is figuring out why, after nineteen years, you want him out with a new council? I, I mean, I don't know why. I mean, that's my hardest problem with the whole thing.
I don't think it's necessarily, Jim, that we want him out. It's that we want to amend the contract. Including the meaning of the contract, we want to add additional duties. When the mayor talked to Rick about adding those additional duties and Rick, in his own voice when he was here, expressed concern that he should be paid additional money and that he was not open to receiving additional responsibilities or additional duties. We did talk about whether or not there would be compensation for any additional duties or anything like that, because to be honest with you, the, the, the thing we're trying to exercise at this point in time is taking and closing out, finishing, completing, ending the agreement that the, the city has in place now with the park attendant. If that current power contentant wants to apply or respond to the new agreement and the new responsibilities and duties, then he was told he was welcome to. Instead, what he really feels like he wants to do, at least his actions at this point in time, is to move on. He, he also suggested himself that maybe he should look for one of those places that would pay, pay in addition to women board, pay a, 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 some kind of money for enumeration of, for the work that he did. I suggested that would be an excellent idea for him. But unfortunately, the city is, is not in a position where they can add funds to that. We just went through the change in police chief. The primary issue there, the primary issue there was the ability to compete when it comes to finances. And our, our, our monies are limited. Our ability to gain additional monies are very limited. We wish it were more. You know, people would complain about the taxes are going up, the city's getting rich. Our, our, our city's property tax share is going up seven hundred dollars this year. Yeah, we're gonna get rich off of that. And the fact of the matter is, is that we are very limited in the amount of funds we have. And and we do need that, that job done. And we really feel where, where rents and utilities are going, that there will be an individual who will accept that role, that responsibility. The additional responsibilities that we're adding to that for the, the amount of, of monies that are there, I don't, there isn't anything. I mean, we're, we're appreciative of everything that Rick has done for the city for, for the years. They isn't trying to kick him out. He's trying to move on in that particular position and accomplish the goals that we, we, we need to have accomplished. Otherwise, the bathrooms and the boat launch aren't gonna be clean. That, it's, it's those type of things that, that we're, we're trying to, to come up with a solution that will, will meet the need. It has nothing personal against him. If, if, if we could give a, a medal to him, we would, because we appreciate what he's done. Unfortunately, unfortunately, we've come to a place where we, where changes need to be made. We all individually come to a place where we need to make changes personally. I needed to come to a place and I waited, dragged my feet as long as I could, where I needed to retire from the job that I, I did. I, 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 I was doing. And, and I, I guess that, that is not a matter of trying to get rid of them. It's really a matter of trying to move on to accomplish the goal of what needs to be done.
So, Michelle, there is a date of November fourth that terminates everything, the contract?
Correct.
Okay.
So we have a motion on the floor that was seconded. And then the motion was amended to extend the current contract till next meeting. So is there a second to that motion?
To extend the contract?
And the reason for that is to eliminate using the public.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Let's vote on it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Be taken care of in two weeks, Jim. Okay, anything else? Republican? Come on, step, come on. Get in the hot seat.
I don't know if there's a lot of vandalism at the park or not. I asked Mike about the gutters the other day, and he said that kids were pulling them down and stuff. Do we have cameras? I mean, you've got cameras at the boat launch. Do you have any cameras at the park? You catch anybody doing things like that?
We have not caught anybody, Ron. What we're gonna do with the gutters, I've discussed it with Mike, is take them down. There'll be no gutters, so they, they're too low, the roof's too low for the kids to hang on and tear them down every time. We fixed them, I don't know how many times. Put them up, take them down. Put them up, tear, tear them down. Put them up. We just eliminate the problem of taking the gutters down and putting some gravel down there, pea gravel for drainage, like a French drain. And so people won't be walking in mud. That's the only solution we got.
I just wanted to ask that. But, and you also got it when we were cleaning up down there. The post on the west side of the building is rotted off. So it's gonna have to be jacked up and a new post put in, or they, before they've added a piece of stuff like that. So.
Thanks, Ron. Any other public input? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moving adjourned.
Here, second. Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And we're got, what do you want, Michelle? A couple of minutes before we go into workshop? If you guys need it, or else we'll go, go right into workshop. The public's welcome to stay if you wanna stay or not. We got some stuff, the issues to go over. Thank you for coming. If you're leaving.
So in your packets tonight on, for the budget workshop, we have a lot of different information in there, in there, Sam. So the biggest thing I wanted to go over is wages, reclassifying a position and benefits. And then on your desk tonight is information on, this is something we started a while back with replacing our police cars. And so that's what this information on your desk tonight is about. Sam, here's your copy. So Sam does have something in mind that he wants to replace it with, although we just have one officer right now and one reserve officer, Randy, which Randy is retiring on December first. So his will be at the age of seventy. He is having some knee issues, probably gonna have a knee replacement or something like that. So we are trying to work on getting another officer too. So, but we have the brand new Charger that the chief currently is driving. And the other Charger has one more payment to be made on it or actually, yeah. So and then that will be taken care of. So but so we kind of worked out on replacing. It says chief's car, but the chief has the brand new car. So at that time when we did this, the chief had the old car and then gave the new car to the sergeant, which now the sergeant is our chief. So that's something that we do need to decide on and I had like a four-year payment plan in there to pay for it. And then we do have a car to surplus, which would be Randy, the reserves' old car. And we've had a lot of interest in it. We've had people contact City Hall. We've had people talk to chief. There's a lot of people that want that Charger. So we do have a lot of interest. So if we need to surplus that sooner than later or what we want to do. I don't know how long it would take to get another car. So if we did get an officer, then we wouldn't have anything for the reserves or the reserves are going to have to come get a car from the officer or chief. And so it's nice to have three vehicles available with our police crew. Sam, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, there's a lot of people interested in that car because it's got like 90 pounds of wax on it. Randy was very careful with that car and stuff. So it's going to get good value out of it. I like keeping the cars in good shape. The I spoke with Dodge, the fleet guy that we talked to when we got the last car. And because of all the chip shortage and all that, whatever we order is probably going to be anywhere between two and five months out. So pre-planning that, talking to John Brockmiller, he's got to order one or two cars himself. And he's still looking at three to five months out. And I think he's about ready to if he hasn't already ordered them. So the one thing about that is, of course, with all this stuff going on, whatever we get, it's going to be a while. And if we find somebody that is pretty quick to be up on the road, I mean, that could happen any day. That could happen months from now. I don't know. But with all the agencies hiring, even John Brockmiller thinks it's going to be difficult with the wages they pay up there. So either way, we're still going to be waiting on a car most likely. If not, we're going to have a car and then we're ready to go with the next person. So I want to talk about my suggestion or? Oh, it's my show. Thanks. One of the things that I was looking at and it's around the same price is either a Dodge Durango preferably or even one of the trucks. Now, the next question to think is gas mileage. Of course, that's pretty normal. Looking at the gas mileage on anything, the Durango, the newer style with the V6 and everything else, basically built like the car that I have out here, gets similar gas mileage. When you look at a patrol car, though, I've always been under the influence and have seen it, a cop car gets 12 miles a gallon. I don't care if it's got a Hemi or if it's got a V6 because of the idling and everything else, the driving, the taking off after somebody or sitting or whatever. So gas mileage is probably going to be a mood point to some degree, unless I can get a Hellcat. I get six, but I don't see that happening or four or one. Well, some of the things for the Durango is a little easier to get in and out of because it sits a little higher. Got a little higher ground clearance, although we don't have a lot of off-road stuff. We do have the spot out there in the first street that we patrol sometimes. The Durango would come with a trailer hitch and sometimes when I do some of these motor escorts, I could actually put the bike on a trailer and drive to the location in some of these really nasty weathers and only have to be out in the weather for the duration of the escort. As you saw with Chief Williams's escort or funeral service we had, I was able to get six safe patrol bikes out of the Seattle area because we've been helping them. And even though that Terry's death deserved the recognition of being in law enforcement for 35 years, it wasn't in the line of duty death. So but he's still got the respect that 35 years of law enforcement come up with. So I'm kind of looking at the Durango. It's within a couple thousand dollars. The one thing about the Durango is it doesn't have the screen built into it. So we'd actually save around $2,200 for that. So that's my thought process at this moment. So.
Sam, have you priced a small trailer out? Let's see what it would cost?
You can get a small trailer, aluminum trailer for a bike between $1,000 and $2,100 last time I looked. So.
And what other use would you use the trailer for?
I'd use the trailer for anything. It'd be a city trailer. So it can be used for anything, you know, if Mike needed a flatbed trailer to do something, it'd need a full-size or whatever.
Well, Mike and I was talking about hauling the lawn boards and stuff up to do this up around the sign. You've got to drive them up there and it takes forever to get there if we have a small trailer to load them on. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, you could use a small trailer a lot.
Yeah, I would put some racks on it, weed eaters, blowers, generators and the lawn board and that stuff on there so that they can go somewhere.
Yeah, there's a couple different versions of that, of that trailer that gets sides on it and then there's just a flat trailer. And one of the flat trailers was a motorcycle trailer, but it did have the spots where you can just put the wood slats down for sides. So, yeah, pockets. I like that. So again, you know, I think under, I haven't looked in the last six months, but last time I was looking, it was around 2,000 or less. And that's not an enclosed trailer, wouldn't have to be. But that's kind of my idea about that. Then when I have to take it in for service because I have to take it up to Lakewood to get it serviced because it's Kawasaki. And I don't think Devin wants to ride with me for two hours at a time. So I mean, she'd donate the money there, but you know, Devin's always been helpful moving stuff around being our police clerk. So that's just kind of my idea.
I just had a little bit of concern with the market right now for automobiles. It just seems like it's gone crazier than the real estate market. And whether or not we have in fact compared the price of what it would cost for a new vehicle. And I like the idea of Durango, by the way. I'll go on record with that. I think that's very, very appropriate. But comparison of a Charger this year, right now, compared to what we paid for the one you currently drive, how much differences are in price right now?
You're going to actually be surprised. Oh, I have an idea.
Because you got Michelle, you mean?
For the police version V6 Dodge Durango, $31,014. Or the identical thing that I'm driving, $29,382. So that's because, that's because of the police discount, government discount.
We paid, we paid how much for the one we have now because we've got 38, but that I'm sure includes the service of upgrading it to a police car, putting the lights and all of that. And so does that add $10,000 to the price of the vehicle?
I think I can do a lot better than with outfitting of those. Justin Stinning has been great doing outfitting, but I've been finding places to get lighting, like when we did the motorcycle. I found lighting for that really inexpensive and it's working out fine as far as the actual physical life. So instead of spending the $200 a light, I'm finding places I might fully find mics, trying to bust. So I think we can save one there. But yeah, we're going to be $4,000 to $6,000 to set it up.
So my, I guess what my original question is, is the same vehicle you're saying is less expensive now than what we purchased the other one for? Or I'm talking about not taking the Durango, that's a couple thousand dollars. Yeah. Vehicle bought a year ago to a vehicle bought today, how much difference are we talking?
Well, because there was upfitting that took us up to about 35 or 38.
Yeah.
39.
But we bought, we bought a basic vehicle. We didn't buy an outfitted vehicle. And my question, that's what we would buy, then we'd have it outfitted. And what was the comparison between the two? Okay. And that's the only thing is that I'm not sure with all the chip shortage, whether or not it, I did say chip, right? Was not a, that this might not be the best time, maybe eight months from now might be a better time. I, and if it hasn't gone up considerably, then then I would agree that we should go ahead with our plans. But we should at least look at that to see whether or not the current situation in Detroit or wherever they build the cars has deteriorated to the place. I tell you, I, I, I look at Facebook and see what people are trying to get for 10-year-old pickups.
Oh, yeah.
And 16-year-old pickups, no. I'm not talking about yours. What I'm talking about is the 2006 where they want $30,000 for a 2006 pickup. That's the ones that I just say, my God, did people all get stoned or something, you know?
In talking to the dealer, of course, that's from the dealer, the reason it's three to five months out is because of the chip shortage. I don't know for a fact that it would go up. I don't know the fact it would go down. The Durango, both the Durango and the Charger, to the general public are usually up close to $35,000 to $40,000, just the car.
And I'm not, Sam, the only question I had is what do we pay for the last one compared to what? And check on that and get back with us. That's my only, only question. And if it's comparable, I mean, they go up every year.
Right.
But if it's comparable increase, if it's gone up $1,000, you understand that. But if it's gone up $5,000, then we need to say, well, maybe that is due to the supply and demand, which in automobiles always changes.
Oh, yes.
But Ron, can I add to that also? The resale value of our last vehicle that we got was considerably higher to absorb the more cost. If this happens to be a higher cost, I think the resale value we're going to get on this next one is going to be right up there also.
Yeah, I mean, none of us know.
No.
No. But I know a plan was put into place. You always hope that plan stays going the way you like it. So and I mean, I could have somebody walk in tomorrow and be the applicant and I got to have a car for him. Or I could have somebody come in in six months. I don't know. It's advertised. It's out there. We'll see what happens on that side. I do know that the 2009 Charger, like Michelle said, really has a lot of interest. I mean, there's always been people going, you know, when you get rid of that car, let me know, let me know, let me know. Because that's one thing Randy did was take exceptional care of it. So I think we'll get top dollar on that for what it is.
Didn't you also, you and I talked the other night, Sam, about why we can't get exceptional officers to fill our job position? Is because Chehalis and Centrea are offering $25,000 bonuses for signing up with them and then their wages way up there. We can't even compete with that. So we're going to be scraping the bottom of the barrel more or less to try and get somebody to even come in on our wage that we got.
Right. And I've talked to John, I've talked to my, I've talked to Michelle, you know, kind of looking at things. We got four right now, right? Three. We got two entries and one lateral right now in our barrel. And I can't say they're going to be the best ones. One looked very promising. She's a lateral, but you know, because of our wages, which is what it is, it'd be hard to retain that person. And that person, female out of, she's up north around Lacey. Is she going to move down here? She's married. Her husband's in the military, but they can move down here for the pay for a patrol officer. Trailers just bumped it up and I think it was 20 or 25,000, probably closer to 20, but they're paying just to get somebody. And we are in a position and talking to John, he's going, God, I could be a year before I find anybody. And they're paying, you know, pretty good money. That's why he moved on to that location. I don't know. And then, of course, with all the unfortunate negativity towards law enforcement, nobody wants law anymore. They just want to do what they do. You know, it's harder and harder to recruit. And the mindset of the academy has completely went off the fricking rails. I'll say that right here. They're in law land to think they're going to be able to do some of the stuff. So if we hire an entry level, if there are current reserve working on their own, I could work them on the weekends like a regular officer until they go to the academy. But then they're gone for five months, five and a half. So, so we got that going on. And then when they come back, how soon before they leave for one of these $10,000, $20,000 a year bumps? So that answer that? Cool. For the time being?
Well, also too, Sam, the rules have changed this last year also. So you know, whether to go on a call or not, you got to make that decision with a new recruit.
Right.
My hands are kind of tied in this thing, really.
Yeah, with, with all the laws, I mean, with the, with our bank robber, I had to do a whole lot of mentally researching and stuff and finding out for sure whether I could actually chase the guy, which is ridiculous because he's a guy, he's in front of me, he's doing 90 miles an hour. Why can't I just stop him? Well, I had to make sure that he was in that car to make sure it was valid. So, yeah, the rules are a big issue too. Some people don't want to deal with the rules even to apply. So. You want it back?
Yeah.
Okay, on to the budget. So in your packets, like the green sheet was, the dark green, explained some of those changes with wages. I did bump them up, the 5.9% increase, which is the COLA and the social security people are getting. There was a change in the salary splits from Public Works. They were 80% water sewer, 20% city street. And Mike and I sat down and kind of really looked at that and Mike really felt that they probably only spend about 10% of their time, you know, in the city street department doing things. And then we reallocated both Mike and John's wages as to whether they work in the water department more or sewer department. I did a reclassification of Devin's position with an additional wage increase. She's been really critical in our Public Works requests and her responsibilities in the police department. I don't know what, and I think they could attest to this too, what they would do without her. And what she's doing, it is freeing up a lot of their time of things that they are not having to do with her in their office. So she does spend a lot of time and has all of those special classifications that neither Jill or I have. That was so we can't even get in their computer system. We can't even go in their office unless they're there. Devin can do all that. She, you know, can build their reports. She does so much. She sends information to the prosecutor's office when they have a case. So there's so much that she's doing in the police department that is very critical and confidential. So I reclassified her position. Also the benefits, medical benefits, up those. There was an increase to the Paid Family Medical Leave Act. Imagine that, only after two years, they increased that, went from 4% to 6%, or points, 4% to 0.6%. So that is an increase to the city. I do not have LNI rates. I am expecting a slight increase to those. We still need to talk about park board recommendations and if, how much money we're going to allocate to the parks for next year. The purple sheet, all of the information I just discussed with you. I have 2021, what was budgeted for each fund, what has been to date, year-to-date, and then 2022, how much the revenues and budgeted. In the current expense fund, I want to warn you though, I mean, it looks like we're really doing well, you know, with 122,000 left over. But 107,000 of that is ARPA funds, which we need to allocate to different things. So I want to warn you about that. The light tan sheet does discuss the health savings plans versus Health First 500. Most employees here do have the high deductible health savings account. And just kind of showing you what's going on there. The light blue sheet kind of explains wage increases since 2009 or lack of increases. And the amount that the city has. And the amount that the city has allowed to go towards employees insurance and some just some extra information at the bottom. Um, if it's an employee only and they want the Health First five hundred deductible with vision and dental, the the price is eight hundred and thirty dollars and eight cents. If they want to add spouse independence, you could see it goes up to two thousand four hundred and sixty two dollars. The city only puts in currently the seven fifty, so I am looking at that going to the eight thirty. Um, the weird green sheet does explain the wages. And I've taken this into account with reallocating Devon to a different position. And I did put in an increase to a police officer position. So as a police officer, it was the same as a deputy clerk or maintenance assistant. So I did do an increase in that to try to, you know, help get somebody in here. So Sam doesn't work his little tail off all the time. And then the light brown sheet is our cost allocation sheet of how we do allocate different people and things like that. And then, of course, the pink sheet sheets are all of by line item expenditures. And the only other thing I want to say, I know Mike and I just talked about, maybe on Thursday, it was recent. Um, I did put in for a grant for replacing the school signs, the flashing lights, we did not receive it. So we may need to put budget some monies in for just some basic new signs without the flashers or something. Um, what has happened is we have had those since, what did I tell you when we got those? A long time ago, and um the computer system to run those is like not even, we can't even hook it. It it takes a computer that you have to hook up to those signs to change anything, and there's not even a program now to do it. Yeah, the dates have expired to. Yeah. So the problem being there is that, um, I mean, we could talk to the school, too, see maybe if they would go have these with us on something, they may, I don't know. But um the problem being that the lights just flash randomly, so nobody really pays that much attention to them anyway. Because they'll flash on the weekends, they flash at night, they flash weird times. So the problem being, we can't program them any longer, so they do need to be updated. So now I'm here to listen to your thoughts.
Uh, I had a couple of uh couple of questions. Um, and um I I I'm very pro uh looking at salaries positively. Uh, because I think you guys do a great job. My first question is, uh, with the reclassification, how much of a difference did that make to Devon? I'm sorry, Devon, to have to discuss when you're here.
So um Devon is that number eight position. And prior to this, she was making, I think it was two thousand seven hundred a month. Yeah, this doesn't take into account our longevity, that's something, you know, different, too, because if one of us left,
Yeah.
that position's not going to get that longevity. So I think it was around twenty two thousand seven fifty, I want to say.
Okay, and that and and the the second question is uh.
She was barely over sixteen dollars an hour.
Yeah, and I I I I agree that it makes lots of sense. My my other question is, how did we arrive at that number rather than, say, a higher number?
Um, I did look, so through A W C, every year they do a um like a salary survey. And a lot of cities, though, this last year did not do the survey. So trying to find a a position that I felt was similar to what Devon does was difficult. But I, you know, researched it out, and I kind of looked at what other cities were paying that were um similar to Toledo and um sim- that position and came up with a figure.
Okay, that's fine.
I pulled it out of my head.
Yeah, yeah, well, you you compared, you you did benchmarking and.
Yes, yes.
Um, uh, the other question is, how long has it been since the longevity amounts have been looked at and adjusted?
These longevity amounts have been here for well over twenty seven years. Well, no, no, I take that back. We did change it I think five years ago, so it was always um five dollars for every year you've been here. And then um we did change it, um if you were over five years, it went to ten. So we did that probably within ten years.
And uh uh you know, we appreciate the fact that people stay working because we have continuity. And um uh have we uh looked at what it would cost if we did adjust that longevity rate? Uh, uh, you know, twenty percent to twenty five percent higher than what it currently is? How much that would end up costing us? Uh, obviously, uh, if we added turnover, then uh it would.
Yeah, no, I haven't looked at that.
Yeah, and uh I think from my perspective, uh, I I I think it's wonderful that you get a COLA, which means if you don't count real inflation, you almost stay with even to what you made last year. And if you take real inflation, you're way behind the eight ball. And um and I uh I would like us to look at either uh in addition to the COLA, how much it would cost us to have a modest increase or uh uh from my personal opinion, and although I uh will hold on, and then I'm gonna leave. Uh, that uh the um uh to to look at how much it would cost, because I think that that benefits the individual that's been here longer and and has stayed here. Uh, uh, so uh and and in in reality, in most situations, and certainly in all of the these situations, is more uh profitable and and productive to the city. Uh, I I would like to see what it would cost, uh, maybe compare a a set percentage and that uh that isn't too much work, a twenty five percent increase in the pro- the year's service, what do you call years work or uh service, how much that would cost? Because I think that that might be a a a creative.
Has a comment to make about that, too.
So, my experience, um negotiating contracts for a very long time, um or unions, uh generally, your cost of living um increases your base pay, but those longivities should bump with that cost of living. And I don't under- my understanding is that that is not what's not what has happened. And they should be bumping with the cost of living, does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, that's clearly up to you guys, I mean, like in the past, the.
What I'm asking is, that's not what has happened?
No, no.
I, okay.
No, if the cost of the year of service has not changed.
But the year of service doesn't have to change, when the cost of living gets that bump, those longivities should be bumping.
But it isn't, because the years of services and based on the percentage is based on on a set amount. And so in reality, then the year of service has decreased when it comes to real spending over the uh over the years that we have not, when we give them regular increases, that has actually gotten, because it just kept up with the cost of living and the the inflation. So uh we could look at a formula that would automatically, because I agree that that's the way it should be set up.
That's the way it should be set up, though.
Yeah, but uh but on the other hand, we should at least look at uh boosting just that that flat number, something that would reflect uh uh some increase over uh because five dollars today, five dollars for hour, uh five dollars per hour, five dollars per month, how much is it?
Five dollars per year.
Five dollars per month per year.
Twenty seven years, so I get an additional two hundred and seventy dollars a month.
Yeah, and uh and but that that it, so last year was two hundred and sixty dollars or whatever, but the fact of the matter is.
Last month it was two hundred and sixty, I just got my.
Oh, okay.
I understand, but but that's not generally the way that they're set up.
No, and and.
Set up so that when you get a cost of living, because the idea is longevity, in my experience and understanding, longevity doesn't really help you out a whole lot, as you can see, you got another ten dollars for the year. You want the money front loaded, right? So then, I mean, you want the mo- when you're gonna negotiate a salary, you want the money all in your pocket at the beginning. That longevity is, doesn't really ever help you out. So it that you want it to to bump with that base pay on its own, and I don't understand why it wasn't set up to do that.
It just never has been, nobody's suggested to do that in the past.
I would like to suggest that it get a rebate, if that's, I mean, what we're talking about.
Yeah.
So what what kind of numbers are you suggesting or looking at for longevity?
Well, I think you, I think that we just need to sit down and look at it and and look at like what what your COLA increase was and then figure out a formula to to move that forward, because I don't, I don't, I don't see your pay scale, you know what I mean? I don't see your pay scale or longevity in this paperwork.
It's in the, it's in this, but it's not in the the lime green sheet, no.
I I think I think what Sherry's saying, though, is that we get we get a six percent, it's five point nine, the cost of living to COLA. How much was it?
I put in five point nine, because that's what social security was getting.
Okay, so so six percent that uh that we would have a clause that when we gave six percent COLA, that we would immediately give six percent into the longevity pay also, is that what you're saying?
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, if your base pay goes up six percent, then your next, do you see what's happening? It just sort of waterfalls itself down
Yeah.
the line, but what I was asking her was, I don't see, like, I would like to see, do you not have, I mean, do you sign a contract to work for the city?
No, and we're not union.
Okay, so do you, so do you, so you, you don't have any type of agreement?
We have a personnel policy manual, and in the personnel policy manual, the longevity is inspected.
But there's no, like, salary scale or anything that says.
That's what we're going over, that's basically that's my green sheet is salary scale.
The salary scale.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and then in the personnel policy manual, it states that um a new person coming into a position makes seventy percent of the wage, and then after three months, it goes to eighty percent, unless they show um that they have more qualifications, then you guys can bring them in at a higher rate, or that they are just exceeding their potential.
So the longevity doesn't show in the salaries, like this would be your salary scale? And the longevity isn't added to that at the end?
Yeah, well, because it's different for every employee.
I understand that.
Yeah.
It's just, I understand that, it's just, I guess, because it's different for me from what I used to look at. Usually you get, like, your title, like your clerk, and it'll say whatever your hourly rate is, and then it'll say um like your year one, you you know, your, let's say your five year is your um is your first longevity and then you're.
I mean, that's kind of a more of a union thing, where they're like, okay, you're a E two to a, you know.
But it makes it easier to, but I guess what I'm getting at is, it makes it easier for you to see how it's going to increase down the road, so we could figure out.
If I'm gone tomorrow, though, when that person wouldn't have any longevity, so because it's based off the years of service for that particular person, not the job.
I understand that.
I do have a suggestion and uh is that we uh we compare uh uh percentage increase in addition to the COLA, how much that would cost us, and com- compare a twenty five in- percent increase to the to the years of service, how much that would cost for two thousand twenty two. Then we also uh put on uh the future agenda, uh a time to have a uh uh workshop or uh group meeting, uh whatever, to discuss uh to discuss the compensation packages that we have. Uh, the competitiveness uh right now that uh Sam mentioned also in today's environment uh is a a temptation to everybody else that works for the city. And we really need to do our diligent part to at least look and see if there's something we can do additionally to retain uh to detain folks. And uh and I I don't think we, yeah, yeah, yeah. And and I and I I don't think that we can uh, I don't think we can take and um uh resolve uh uh the salary situation and correct it for this year's budget. But we certainly can look at.
We have till December thirty first to pass the budget. I mean, I have public hearings set for um again, the next meeting in the first part of December. But if nothing's resolved, we have till December thirty first to pass budget. Do I want to do that? No.
No.
But um we just have to have a budget passed by December.
But the one, the one thing I was hoping is that by the next meeting, we can have some options that we can look at and see whether or not we want to uh to add to the package that we have currently in place. And a legitimate way, I think, to look at it is the way we currently have our uh years in service set up is to increase that amount per month, per year. And uh and so another way would be to give a an out and out uh a percentage raise. The last couple of years, we've given small percentage raises, three percent last year, I believe. But uh but to be honest with you, uh, that probably covers the difference in what you pay for gasoline. And uh uh you know, it's it's a very uh tenuous time now in the future. We anticipate that the economy will make other adjustments, but because always has.
You can see, this is quite large increase to what we've ever seen.
Yeah.
When you look at that, you know, blue sheet, I mean, you see a lot of zero percents.
Yeah.
Or even the year that we lost hours, we went down to thirty six hours and um not all the employees that we have currently had to fight for with that, but there were several of us that were here during that period, time period, well, well over half of us. So, I mean, it was tough, when we've had some tough years, because if you don't have the revenue coming in, you can't, doesn't matter what it says on paper, you can't spend the money out, you in wages. Where, you know, I know that you guys, and I appreciate, you know, all your thoughts on this and, you know, wanting to see something happen here. But um I watch those pennies, and that's my job. So I'm, you know, I'm very cautious, and I try to advise you guys the best that I can according to what the numbers in my magic ball are showing up to. So um I I know I for one, and in talking with employees, I don't want to see us go back to thirty six hours or thirty two hours or lose wages either. I don't want to see, okay, we're having some good times now, to raise these wages so high that we can't sustain that wage in the future. So. It's difficult. Sam thinks he needs to say something.
I was around here with the rest of them, and uh one thing that I know is which they, whether we do it or not, at least you guys are paying attention that we should try and do something.
Yeah. So I will get something to you, we'll have a workshop on it. Um, normally, we would have our first reading of our budget ordinance, but we don't have to do that. The next one, we could, you know, wait till the meetings in December, it's not a problem. Um, what are your thoughts then on PAR? So um Mike had given you guys some information on. What are your thoughts then on park? So um, Mike had given you guys some information on the improvements that the park board wanted to do, and that was around. Five grand, am I correct on that, Mike? Fifty-five hundred dollars. Mike actually went to the Lions Club and has already received a thousand dollars to those projects. And um, the plan is to also go to Vision Toledo and see if they would offer up any funding for those projects. What are your thoughts on how much, or do you want to, you know, make any kind of decision right now? Or, I mean, we can't make a decision because this is a workshop, but what would you like to discuss on those projects that Mike has presented to you? On what you want to fund for next year for the park?
I personally think we should put into the budget, the amount to do those projects. Plus with the Lions Club, so that would be what, forty-five hundred?
Yes.
Yeah, I I think that should be the minimum with the hope that maybe uh, additional funds will come available from other sources to do more. Uh, Ron mentioned the fact that we have a post that needs to be replaced, and we're gonna have those type of items. Because it's a facility that gets wear and tear and is aging. So um, I I would like to see us make it to forty-five hundred dollars and go with it.
Any other thoughts?
I would agree with Ron, that's forty-five.
Okay, so I will um, add that in there.
Work. Forty.
Forty-five hundred.
Forty.
Forty-five hundred.
And hope that we get some additional funding.
This one's really very interesting.
Yes.
Supporting us also.
Yeah. And then um, I'm not sure. Uh, what the numbers on the walk in the park. I don't think Jill's finished that yet.
Didn't she say it was like seventeen hundred?
How much?
Seventeen hundred, or was it that much?
I don't know. I have to, I I'll take a look at that. So what are your?
Also, one other thing, the Lions Club, Mike discussed with, for a thousand. Also told Mike if he needs more to come back.
Yeah.
So I mean, there's, we got some options here. The city don't have to absorb the whole thing.
Possibly, yes. So that, then the other thing is, what are your guys' thoughts, um, you know, on the insurance, upping that to the eight thirty?
I think at least that amount. So yes, we should put a thirty. I um, I do uh. I I guess I should have begun with asking you uh, whether or not that five point nine is probably where we need to be. Uh, or whether or not we should consider additional options. And I uh, and I was presumptuous in in um. In thinking of ways how to raise it, but as you said, if the revenue, if we're concerned that the revenue might not be there, then. Then maybe we need to leave that there and then uh, sometime into the new year, not for this budget. But actually have uh, uh, and Shelley should, should be there. Uh, a workshop where we consider the uh, we considered the whole compensation packages we have.
Yeah, and you guys um, have that ability to change that at any time during the year. I mean, generally, yeah, a lot of it, we talk about it and most of it does get done. At the budget time, because it just makes more sense. But um, if you guys, we get into six months or something and, you know, feel that. Something else is changing or responsibilities or something like that, you you, you know, you guys as a council can discuss that and change that at any time too. Because um, now that I'm thinking about it, that was the other thing I was going to talk to you guys about. Um, not all of you guys do take a salary. It is um, you know, fifty dollars. It's a lot of money, but. What, the way that it breaks down is if you show up to both meetings, it's considered four hours of work. So twenty-five dollars a meeting at two hours is twelve dollars and fifty cents. So you guys aren't even making minimum wage as being a council. The mayor gets a whopping one hundred dollars. So that's something too, is if um, you can't vote in wages increased to yourself. But new people that um. Are voted in would get those wage increases. So that's something too you guys want to discuss, and we could, you know, look at that.
I would like you to answer the five point nine percent. Do you feel like that's probably where?
Um. It's really high, but I'm looking at the numbers, I think we can afford that.
Okay.
Um, looking at what. When I looked at A W C, and you have the ability to look at A W C, their salary survey too, you have to sign in and stuff. Um, the positions, some of our positions are right where they should be for cities our size with the tax base that we receive. And some positions are a little bit low.
Okay, um, so uh. You answered my question, and so I I will withdraw my uh, request. That you look at the uh, at the years of service, but I think that that is something that should, like I said, be in a, in a whole compensation package workshop. And so that we have lots of time to look at various options on how we can uh, how we can uh. Uh, look at wages a a little bit better than what we do, because if the five point nine percent gets that look on your face. I don't want to suggest, I don't want to suggest a higher amount, so, so uh, and so.
I would love more money, but.
But I think the five point nine percent should be the minimum that we should.
I mean, I was here when we went down to thirty-two or thirty-six hours and.
Yeah.
I don't think.
Unfortunately, it worked for the, unfortunately, it worked for the state. We worked for the state and they, they decided they were gonna take hours away from us. So they took hours away and told us to stay home. They weren't gonna, we weren't gonna get less pay, we're just gonna get less hours.
But we got less pay.
Yeah, yeah, as well. I mean, I mean that they paid us for two thousand hours instead of two thousand eighty hours. So we, they, they gave us a a decrease, and then they said not to, not to come to work. Whenever the union uh, fought it, then they came back and they paid us for days that we didn't work. Yeah, yeah, it's made all the sense in the world, but anyway.
Do you guys have any other questions on the expenditures information and um, like, even like my little purple sheet? Um, all the funds look pretty well. Um, your water sewer department. Yeah, but um, all the other funds look pretty good. And a part of the water sewer, I mean, it does show a negative amount. These are projections, doesn't mean that's going to happen. It could happen if they um, spent every dollar and we only received what we are anticipating getting. But um, and part of that's because of, you know, the reallocation that we had done. So next year, we've put in for another, you know, just small increase of water sewer rates. It's like a dollar a month. So when you have, you know, three hundred and sixty customers. And a dollar a month, it's not a whole lot of additional income coming in. We will have some new hookups. So I had two um, building permits today, and this year we've had. Five new hookups? Yeah, so that's helping out, and um, the mayor and myself and Mike will be talking with a developer on this Wednesday. And that wants to be putting in some homes, so um, I mean, tell, we know something for sure, these, like I said, these are just projections. I, I feel comfortable though with these numbers. I'm not like freaking out, like, oh my gosh, these thirty-two thousand dollars in the hole. I've, I feel confident, I feel comfortable. I'm, yeah. So. Um, I guess we'll have a workshop at the next council meeting. So bring all the information I've given you over the last three meetings with you. If you guys have like additional goals you want to talk about. Or really feel strongly about that you want added, you know, let's get that, get those goals written down so we could get those in the budget too. So is there any other questions, comments?
Appreciate all your hard work on this.
No, I thought you raised your hand. If we could just keep our police department under control and spending, then we'll be fine.
There you go.
Yeah, that was a lot of hours, so. Yeah. Mayor, if you want to go ahead and close the workshop, we can do that.
Okay, I hear.